All right, so we got Councilmember Tuttle who's on the phone. I think that we have everyone. So let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting on October 19th, 2021.
Is there any discussion on the minutes? If there is no discussion, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes. Is there a second?
Sir.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. All in favor of said motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
The ayes have it? The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk?
Consent Agenda Items 1 through 13.
So does every member get a chance to review the consent agenda? And if so, is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull Items Number 5 and Number 7 from the consent agenda.
Items Number 5 and 7 have been pulled. Is there any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, I will make the motion to accept the consent agenda with the exception of Items 5 and 7. Is there a second?
Sir.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. All in favor of said motion, please say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it? The ayes do have it. Chair recognizes Councilmember Cirillo for a discussion on Item 5.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask, do we know that this is a relatively small lease agreement? But I just wanted to make sure the city has done its due diligence and we know we are getting fair market value for this lease agreement?
Yes, I'm going to ask John Filbrick from Property Management to just give you a little information on the background of this lease.
Okay, thank you.
John, if you wouldn't mind going to the podium. Yeah, thank you.
John Filbrick, Real Estate Administrator. Let me take this off, maybe we can hear me. The background on this lease, we acquired this property as part of the Kellogg Web Road project. And with the redesign of the project, it turned out that the sign did not have to be relocated. So the sign has remained through the development of the project. We had the sign on a month-to-month lease at $600 a month. Now that the project is completed, the owner of the sign wanted to get a longer-term lease. And so we've negotiated this lease at what we believe is market rate. We're looking at a rate of 600, or not 650.
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred. Had old notes. They wanted 650, and we negotiated up to the $800 a month plus 10% of revenues if they exceed the 800. We base this on looking at comparable signed leases in the market. We have several that the city has. We also talked to folks that have signed leases, and that's how we came up with settling at the amount.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion on Item 5? If there's no further discussion, then I'll make a motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the lease agreement and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Sir.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. All in favor of said motion, please say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it? The ayes do have it. Chair recognizes Councilmember Cirillo for a discussion on Item 7.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to pull this item off consent agenda to bring some attention to this obviously good program that supports the Wichita Fire Department in their mission of public safety. The Wichita Fire Department is one of 100 departments across the country that was identified for some additional support to help with fire safety awareness and education throughout the community in the Wichita School District. This is a $5,000 cash grant that's vital to help communicate safety messages and to improve retention of the information shared throughout the community. And in District 3, we deal with a lot of fire hazards in District 3, so this is important to me. So I believe these items are also key to community relations and the marketing strategies of the Wichita Fire Department. So in just my short six months on serving on this council, it's been an honor to support the fire optimization study, extending the safer grant for 12 firefighters and two brush trucks, and supporting three items just a few weeks ago for $8.4 million into the Wichita Fire Department of pandemic relief money to help buy new gear and new trucks. So it'll be a great honor to support the Wichita Fire Department in this item as well. Thank you.
Okay. Is there further discussion? See none. With that, I'll make the motion for Item 7 to accept staff's recommended action to authorize the Fire Department to receive the Hartford Fire Safety Grant, except any award offered. Is there a second?
Sir.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it? The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk?
Board of Bids and Contracts dated October 25th, 2021.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Melinda Walker, Purchasing Manager. We have for engineering water distribution system to serve Brookfield addition. We're going to recommend, recommendation is to defer to November 1st. We have uniforms for our Water Utilities Division. Recommendation is to defer to November 15th. Our natural supply, gas supply for city facilities is Encore Energy Services Group 1 based bid for $21,293 and Tiger Natural Gas Group 2 Alternate 1, $12,870.70. We have trees for the Park Department, Johnson's Garden Center Groups 1 through 30, $153,598.50. Hillside Nursery Groups 32 through 34, $18,000. We have valve boxes for a recommendation of Core and Main LP for $77,100. True NAS Dual Controller Storage System, Data Edge Solutions Corporation for $81,715. Also our procurement website to register to become a vendor for the City of Wichita and our open request for proposals and approve, recommendation to approve the bid award as recommended.
Is there just, are questions of staff? See none, thank you. Is there any discussion on the item? There is no discussion on the item, then I'll make a motion to accept staff's recommended action to receive and file the report, approve the contracts, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Sir.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. All in favor of said motion, please respond by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it? The ayes do have it. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Appointments and Comments?
It's open up to appointments. Are there any appointments at this time? Councilmember Frye?
Thank you. I have liked to appoint Cody Erwin, E-R-W-I-N, to the Wichita Sustainability Board, and I will forward his information to the Clerk.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Johnson?
Vice Mayor, I would like to appoint Jennifer Brehorn as the Diversity, Inclusion, and Civil Rights Board Representative to the Wichita Sustainability Integration Board. Is there any further appointments? If not, then I'll make a motion to accept all appointments. Is there a second? Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. Members will respond by saying aye to vote in favor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry. All opposed, same sign. The ayes do have it? The ayes have it. Backing on to general comments for the good of the body, is there any comments or discussion? Vice Mayor Johnson?
Vice Mayor, I would say that we do the board of bids and contracts. Maybe it's on the slide for the website to work with, that Wichita, I just highlight that it's out there and I could even promote our council meetings.
Further discussion? If there's no further discussion, I'll make the motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second? Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Johnson. All in favor of said motion to adjourn, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The ayes have it? The ayes do have it, and we are adjourned. We're now heading into our workshop portion of the meeting, so for that, the Chair recognizes the manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Today, we have one topic for your review, and that is the Airport Layout Plan. This plan document is required by FAA in order for us to be grant-eligible for activities at the airport. I'm going to turn it over to Scott Rigby to introduce this topic as interim Airport Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Scott Rigby is the City Manager and Airport Director. I'm excited to bring this project forward. This is the first information purposes. As you may know, Jabara has seen tremendous activity around the airport, a lot of growth not just in commercial activity but industrial activity, but also just in general residential activity out there. I think it's important to bring this forward to bring this greater awareness of the airport and the airport's potential, of the importance of protecting the airport. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to John Oswald, our Airport Engineer, who will introduce the item and then turn it over to our Consultor Coffman Associates. John?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. John Oswald, Airport Engineering and Planning Manager. Today, I'll cover how we got here and introduce the presenter. In early 2020, staff interviewed five firms and selected Coffman Associates from Overland Park. Their work began in mid-2020 and recently was completed to the final draft stage. And today's presentation, after today's presentation, it'll be officially presented to the FAA for their formal review. And by the way, the project is FAA IP grant-eligible, and we took advantage of that. During the project's evolution, there were two PAC meetings, Planning Advisory Committee meetings, that the PAC is comprised of 13 stakeholders. As chapters became available, those chapters were made available to the PAC members and also presented on the project-specific website, which was and still is available for review. Leading up to today's workshop presentation, this presentation, or one very similar to what was made to the Wichita Advisory Board and also to the City of Bel Air just last week. Here today, representing WAB, is Chair Charlie Fletcher, members Tim Bonnell and Ron Ryan, and also participating today is Brad Christopher, Assistant Director of Airports. The presenter today, and you see him on the screen, is Patrick Taylor, Senior Planner and Project Manager for Coffman. As I understand it, I'm controlling here, Patrick, so when it's time to move forward, let me know. So, thank you.
Sounds great. Good morning, everyone. As John said, I'm Patrick Taylor, Principal and Project Manager with Coffman Associates. We're a national airport planning firm based at Overland Park, and we've actually been working with the City of Wichita for, well, nearly 40 years. So this is another project that we're proud of, and I'll take a few minutes to kind of step you through the findings of this ALP narrative report. And John, right now, I cannot, oh, here we go. I couldn't see the presentation.
Okay, Patrick, we're getting there.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. The right arrow should advance me?
Down arrow.
The down arrow, okay. Okay, Patrick, can you see the screen?
I can, perfect. Well, let's just talk about what the project is. So it is called an Airport Layout Plan and Narrative Report. An Airport Layout Plan is a set of technical drawings of the airport that depict the current and the planned future conditions of the airport. The FAA requires a current ALP to be on file to support grant funding decisions, and any project for which the airport may seek federal funding must be depicted on the Airport Layout Plan. A master plan is the primary planning document for an airport, which is typically updated every seven to 10 years or as is needed. However, there is an alternative, which is ALP and Narrative Report, which is somewhat limited in scope and cost and typically has a shorter outlook. So the last master plan for Jabara was completed in 2005, and many, there are many new FAA standards that needed to be addressed, especially an Airport Aeronautical Survey. There are new taxiway design standards, runway protection zone standards, and land use planning. So this project is probably best described as an Enhanced Airport Layout Plan and Narrative Report because it includes many of the elements of the master plan. And as John mentioned, this is funded by the FAA. In this case, it's at 100%. It was part of the 2020 CARES Act. A couple of assumptions going in. One is that Jabara would remain a general aviation reliever airport. There will be a federal airport improvement funding program continuing into the future. And then most, if not all, the projects that are included in the plan would be eligible for FAA funding. John? So there was a, there is a formal process that we followed. Each of these squares essentially represents a chapter or a section within the plan. And at strategic points, we presented draft material to a Planning Advisory Committee, the group that John mentioned. So that was a group of 13 airport stakeholders that served and acted as kind of a sounding board for us. We also presented the draft materials at two different public information workshops, one of which was done virtually, and the other one was done in person at the WSU Tech Campus this past July. And as John mentioned, we've done several other public presentations, including to the Airport Advisory Board. And just last week, we visited the Bel Air City Council to talk about some specifics in terms of airspace protection that we were presenting to them, and of course, we are here today. So it's been a pretty robust public element, and I might just emphasize the website up there, that's jabara-airportstudy.net. All of the draft material that has been presented in all of these meetings is available on that project website right now. I always like to remind people of the value and the importance of their local airport. In 2016, KDOT did an economic impact study of the airports across the state. There are 73 general aviation airports like, similar to Jabara, and Jabara actually has the highest, sixth-highest total economic impact among those 73 general aviation airports. At the time, about $156 million in annual output. Certainly, that's increased since then because there's been quite a bit of growth and activity out at the airport. The airport supports over 1,000 jobs, and Jabara accounts for 9.2% of jobs in the state created by general aviation airports. It's a real economic engine and a valuable asset for the region. So there are two specific elements that the FAA will approve in a study like this, in a planning study like this. One is the forecast of aviation demand, and the other is the actual airport layout plan, those technical drawings that depict the current and the future condition of the airport. So right now, there's about 113 aircraft that live out at the airport, based aircraft, and over the next 20 years, we're projecting that to grow to about 138, with the mix actually increasing in terms of turbine aircraft. So you'll see a larger percentage of business jets and turboprops at the airport over time. And then the number of operations, an operation being a landing or a takeoff, each one of those is a single operation, about 37,000 out there currently growing to about 48,000. So these two indicators lead us to identifying various facility needs over the course of the next 20 years or so. Just a quick one here. This is the approval letter from the FAA to John approving those forecasts and the projected type of aircraft using the airport. So that allowed us to check that off the list of things we need to accomplish during this plan. Okay, so this graphic depiction is the planned future condition of the airport. We put it on an aerial and color-coded it. So everything that you see in red is new pavement, so that's taxiways or aircraft apron or ramp area. Everything in yellow is a new building or a hangar, and everything in blue is roads and parking. And we also depict projected land uses on this graphic as well. One thing to note is we've identified a certain level of need in terms of hangar development, which is about 50,000 square feet of new hangar space over the next 20 years. And what we're showing here is a lot more than that. So we're really presenting a long-term vision for airport development over time and identifying certain locations where a certain type of hangar should be considered. So, for example, T-hangers are small individual unit hangers, and those should be co-located with other existing T-hangers. And then kind of box hangers are medium-sized open-space hangar, and conventional hangers are larger business-type hangers where a fixed-base operator, for example, may run a business. So if anybody's looking for a certain hangar type, the airport is easily able to look at this depiction or the ALP and say, well, this would be a good area for that type of hangar. And I'll talk a little bit more about some detail. You'll notice, so just to orient here, to the right is the north. We've identified some areas adjacent to the airport, particularly on the east side, where there are no hangers depicted currently, but in the future, there may be a need for the airport to expand capabilities and hangar availability to the east side. And to do that effectively, there may be a need to acquire about 60 acres for, excuse me, for airport property. That would also go a long way to protecting the airport from encroachment of any incompatible land uses like home developments, things like that. So there's a, there's a bit of a nuance in terms of the airport layout plan. So while we, as planners, have to show certain hangar types so that we understand the separation distances on planned new taxiways, the airport layout plan and the FAA understand that actual hangar development is very dynamic. So just because some of the depictions in the plan show a certain hangar type, there's no, there's no need to be stringent on those hangar-type sizes that are depicted. So the actual airport layout plan is going to look like this. There won't be any hangers shown, although we do have an idea of what types of hangers should go where, which is going to give the airport and City Council maximum flexibility to entertain any type of development proposals that may come their way. I might point out some, some specific elements on this, on this drawing. So you can see there's a roadway, it's 43rd Street North and Lindbergh, which goes through that trapezoidal area on the north end of the runway. That trapezoid is the runway protection zone, and the ideal standard for that is that there wouldn't be public roads through that. So it's a low utility road, and in past planning and in this plan, it's recommended for closure and absorption into airport property, which would provide that clear and standard runway protection zone. And I believe there's been some ongoing discussions about that possibility. You'll also notice that there's a red taxiway that extends past the WSU Tech Campus up into an area of undeveloped land of airport property. So that's just an opportunity to either expand aeronautical uses to that area, or it's actually still a possibility for non-aeronautical uses. You know, one thing that this airport has that many airports in urban areas don't have is large tracts of undeveloped land. So you have a real opportunity to kind of market this airport to larger manufacturing type of facilities, you know, maybe aircraft manufacturing, for example, if you needed a taxiway. But in fact, you have enough land to possibly invite non-aeronautical development, which would generate revenue for the airport in the form of land leases. John, should we go to the next one? So I've got a couple of kind of zoom-ins on the, on the future condition of the airport. I was just talking about this potential taxiway, which would open up that, that whole area of undeveloped land for access to the runway taxiway system. Again, might be ideal for aircraft manufacturing or something like that that would need access to the taxiway system. There's a second taxiway extending just south of the WSU Tech Campus, and we had some discussions with them, or at least they presented to us, that they've got hopes and ideas of expanding in that direction and possibly starting up their flight school and building a hangar to support that flight school. So there's some real opportunities happening at the north of the airport as well. And, next. I mentioned the east side of the airport. We did a little more detailed analysis to try and identify an access point to the, to the east side of the airport. Right now, there's, there's not a way to get to the east side of the airport that's, that's easy, that could provide access to future aeronautical development. So we looked at six different locations and identified the two there that have a star as probably the best, the best future roadway access to the east side of the airport. And that may be something that the airport would want to secure early so that the pressures of, of development around the airport won't preclude possible east-side access, road access. So one of the primary outputs of the Airport Layout Plan and Narrative Report is a list of FAA-eligible projects. And we've color-coordinated those in yellow in short-term years, one through five, then intermediate with red and long-term with, with blue. This is kind of a starting point for the airport. It provides a list of about 46 different projects eligible for FAA funding at 90% that the airport could pursue as needed. This list isn't, isn't indicating that this is what has to happen, or even in some cases, what needs to happen. It's really based on, on demand and need at the time. But if, the, the key is to have this list to understand that it's interchangeable based, you know, year after year, based on the priorities of the airport and FAA funding eligibility, and, and that it's on the airport layout plan so that it can be eligible for funding. So, so there's, there's quite a few projects here. This should, this should last for airport planning for many years to come, and it's a pretty comprehensive list. So that list does translate into project costs. So we've estimated in $2,021 the cost for all of these projects, the 46 projects that are listed there. And the, the total capital improvement program is about $55 million, the vast majority of which is eligible for FAA funding. And of course, that leads directly to continued economic development for the airport and the region. So there's a, one area in terms of grant assurances that I wanted to emphasize a little bit today. Grant assurances are what the airport and, and the City Council signs when they accept a grant from the FAA, and that's for both airports, in fact. And those are requirements that the airport sponsors must incorporate into their grant agreements, and there's 39 of them. And they touch on all things airport, general operations, management, financing, planning, and implementation. And there are consequences if, if airports do not meet their grant assurances. Essentially, they can be withheld from future grants, or even current grants can be, current projects can be stopped. So it's a really important piece of any grant that the airport accepts, and they have a life of anywhere between three years to 20 years. Most projects are associated with a 20-year guarantee by the sponsor to maintain that asset. So let's talk about Grant Assurance 22 Hazard Removal and Mitigation. So sponsors must protect terminal airspace by removing, lowering, relocating, marking, lighting, or otherwise mitigating existing airport hazards and preventing future airport hazards. So you, as the sponsor, have an obligation to protect the airspace around the airport. So that word, terminal airspace, this is what that looks like. So all, all airports in the country have a defined terminal airspace, and there are elevations and height restrictions associated with these. This is what are called the Part 77 airspace surface. The inner oval is a, is a flat plane about 150 feet above the runway, and then the blue circles are concentric circles that extend upward and outward from there. And then the approaches- And then the approaches to the runway end, so these are predefined instrument procedures that pilots use to land at airports, those are also protected areas as well. So the city of Wichita, Sedgwick County, has actually taken that airspace drawing I just showed you and translated that into this drawing, which is a depiction of the existing airport hazard zoning around the airports in Wichita and Sedgwick County. So each of those colored squares is a square that represents a height elevation, and if something is to be constructed that exceeds the height of elevation in that area, then the city is notified, and they can analyze that particular proposal for compliance with the airport height and hazard zoning. Next. This is that same airspace, terminal airspace drawing, but overlaid on top of the city and county boundaries. So the city of Wichita and the county have adopted that height and hazard zoning that's depicted in the previous grid pattern picture, but the city of Bel Air has not adopted any airspace zoning at all. And so that was one of the critical reasons why last week, we went and visited in person with their city council to let them know that this is a concern for the airport and that it's in their interest to protect the airport against height and hazard penetrations that could damage the viability of the airport. Some other elements that we found in our land use analysis is that there is zoning on airport property that is not compliant with the industrial nature of an airport. In fact, the city of Wichita zones two areas on airport property for residential, which is entirely incompatible with an airport activity. And then there's a small 20-acre parcel at the north end that's in the city of Bel Air that's zoned agricultural. Of course, the good news is the airport owns this property, and so they can easily prevent incompatible land uses. But to clean up the map, at some point, the airport may want to change the zoning through the city of Wichita and the city of Bel Air so that it's all industrial and protect the airport from incompatible land uses in that way. John, next. So a summary, so the Wichita Airport Authority, the city council, you have met your grant assurance by informing Bel Air of the existence of the Part 77 surfaces. In fact, we've done that in two meetings, and of course, we were at city council up there just last week. And so the Part 77 is a guide to local jurisdictions on how to protect airports and regional economic benefits that airports bring. And so the airport authority is looking to partner with the city of Bel Air to encourage them to adopt the height and hazard zoning that exists today. So that's that grid pattern map that I showed you earlier, or if it's updated at any point, to adopt that as well. And then I mentioned the on-airport zoning, so the airport would like the city of Bel Air to rezone that airport parcel from agricultural to industrial. So I've just got two slides left. I'm going to try and kind of summarize the key takeaways and then the next action steps. But, key takeaways, no change to runway length at 6,000 feet. This is a very solid general aviation runway length. That doesn't mean in the future, perhaps when a full master plan is undertaken, that there may be a need to plan for a longer runway, but right now, the runway length doesn't change. The area airspace doesn't change. The instrument approaches that dictate what the area airspace is are planned to remain the same, and they're very good for this airport. No unit hangers are depicted on the airport layout plan. The hangar concepts shown in the report are for planning purposes and will likely change based on developer specifications. There are opportunities at this airport for both aeronautical and non-aeronautical development. And I might just pause right there. The FAA does not allow non-aeronautical development unless it can be shown that there is not a need for all of airport property to be reserved for aeronautical uses. And in this study, we have shown that. There is excess land, particularly to the north, and some land that is completely disconnected from the airport by roadway. So that is an opportunity for the airport to generate additional revenue through ground leases for non-aeronautical development, think something like warehousing, that would be compatible with airport activities. We have put together a 20-year capital improvement program, so the airport should actively continue to pursue FAA grant funding, and they've had a long history of doing that. We mentioned consider updating land use control measures to ensure compatible land uses around both airports. So I showed you that airspace, that Part 77 drawing with the oval, and then that had been translated into the grid pattern, which introduces a bit of vagueness to the airport overlay zone. So one thing that the airport and the city may consider is updating their airport overlay zone to reflect that Part 77 surface more specifically. And we've been in talks with the airport about how they can pursue that. And that also relates to updating the height and hazards on the overlay. And then we've mentioned that we've completed a pretty extensive public involvement program, and we've also, as I said, had the meeting with the city of Bel Air, alerting them to the existence of the airspace protection needs that goes over there. So last slide here, just some action items. So we will submit the airport layout plan to the FAA for their review and approval. That will go through various lines of business at the FAA, including airspace analysis. And that is the last step for finalizing this project. The airport should review and update the airport capital improvement program annually with the FAA to determine priority projects and funding availability. And I know that that is done on an annual basis, and so keep that grant program flowing to the airport is beneficial. I've mentioned pursuing vacating 43rd Street for runway protection zone compliance. That land ultimately should be just incorporated into airport property. Couple of parcels on the airport are not zoned consistent with what an airport is, so it's recommended that both the city of Wichita and Bel Air change that zoning to industrial, and then, of course, engage and partner with Bel Air. And that process has already started in order to encourage them to adopt either the existing height and hazard zoning or any updated height and hazard zoning. And then mentioned pursue the acquisition of 60 acres of property on the east side, adjacent to the east side of the airport, which is eligible for FAA reimbursement. That is to allow for ultimate expansion of aeronautical facilities on the east side of the airport and to protect the airport from encroachment by any incompatible development that may come along. So with that, I'm available for any questions, or we can engage in any discussion.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. And this may not be something exact that I have the wording on, so help me through this, Patrick. I know that the federal government has identified $8 billion in airport rescue grants. Do any of our capital identified projects fall under that opportunity?
Oh, they very well could. And in fact, like I mentioned, this project, this planning project, was funded at 100% under the CARES Act. So the method for knowing when and where that might be eligible is for John Oswald to continue engaging with Jason Knip at the FAA here in Kansas City. And I know John has done that. So absolutely, there's that possibility. There are different restrictions, so it's not completely tied to that airport improvement program, but there's definitely opportunities.
Okay, good, thank you.
Further questions? Councilmember Clayke.
Thank you for the presentation today. Could you go back?
Please, to the east access component slide. They're not numbered, so I don't know. The east access components? Okay.
I understand I don't make it worse here.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how to get back to it. These concepts. Tyler might be doing this. I think Tyler's trying to do it, too. Sorry. If I could get rid of this. How do you get rid of that? I can't get it to go away. Here we go. Okay, which slide?
I think I knew which one it is. East access, is that the request?
That one. Okay. Can you talk a little bit about the plans for that? It's real tiny on ours, and I can kind of read that, but just the plans for that. I know it's to, for hangar space and to protect the airport, but what does that mean? I mean, I understand what hangar space is, but...
It was a little choppy, but I think you asked if we could describe the plans for the east side access. So why don't I take a shot at that, and then maybe if John or Scott also wants to chime in, they could help there, too. So right now, there's not convenient access to the east side of the airport. So we're looking for, is there an opportunity to extend kind of another main entrance road to the east side? That one labeled number four, we identified as a nice shot kind of to the center of the airport, and that actually happens to be city of Wichita-owned land right now. So it may be a little easier to reserve a right-of-way there than on private land, which would be one, two, or three. And then down at the south end, there's actually a small kind of industrial park road there, I think it's 29th Street. And it would just take a real short extension to get that onto airport property. And you'll notice there's two different colors there on the east side. There's kind of the pink and the blue. The pink is what we've identified for aeronautical reserves. So that would be exclusively for hangers or other types of direct aviation businesses. But as I mentioned, there's some excess land at the airport, and that blue area is identified for potentially a mix. So that could be something like an extension of that existing little industrial park onto airport property to accommodate, you know, warehousing or other small industrial-type land uses, leading to direct revenue from land leases to the airport. And if John or Scott has any additional comments, they could chime in.
I think it's all covered, Patrick.
Okay.
Cover the question?
Thank you. No, thank you.
Any further discussion or questions? Seena?
Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you all.
Thank you.
Well, reason we wanted to, well, there are several reasons we want to share this, but one of those is that we now have a better idea on development potential at Jabara on both the east and west sides. And we will be taking steps now that this has been reviewed by you and is headed to the FAA. Once it's approved by FAA, we'll start doing some planning in terms of the potential for development of those areas. Scott, anything you want to add?
Anything I can add, Mr. Manager? It is important it is to talk about development on airports. Just as experiences has taught me over 20 years working with airports, just as much as it is, we talk about on-airport development, the critical function of these types of documents is to help protect airports from off-airport development encroachment. Oftentimes, what limits airports is not the physical assets on the airport, it's what's going on around it. So as we talk about those runway protection zones, we know in the future, K96 will be expanded to three lanes each way, and probably be freeway improvements to interchange. So how does that impact if we have a runway protection zone? We want to make sure they're not causing conflicts either way, but how do we help improvements? Most of the development we're seeing off-airport is just to the west, which is a large industrial park. You can think of new Amazon development, a number of different other spec warehouses going on, as well as to the north and to the east, as we're seeing a significant amount of residential encroachment. And in Wichita, it's interesting, when I moved here, we said the sound of aircraft is the sound of money until it flies over your house. And unfortunately, I've lived through the hearts of where I used to have three employees. All they did was take air noise complaints at the past airport I used to work with. So as much as it sounds great today, it might not sound great tomorrow. So we want to work with our surrounding partners to make sure they're aware of airport development. We want to talk with MAPD, Planning and Zoning, to talk about notifications so that we know what possible developments being proposed and how we can work with those developments to make sure it's compatible. So this is important, not just on airport as much as it is off-airport.
Further discussion? Vice Mayor Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. Bob, so would acceptance of this replace the 2005 plan?
Well, we have, Mayor.
Well, there's no further discussion on this item, and if there's no other items to be discussed, then I, there's no objection, we're adjourned? We are adjourned. Seena?